We got ourselves a unicorn.
Mason, do we have another?
Andrea said that she was coming, but then she called and said there was a conflict, so she's not gonna be able to make it. Then Chris Sumner also is having a.
Lord, there's trouble.
Oh, my goodness. For sure.
That's the rest.
That is trouble.
Hey, Justin.
What's up?
That's on your page, is your picture in the.
Yeah. New gig. You're gonna have to start from scratch, so.
It's, it's, it's very thick. I used to work in grams, so it's super thick. Thank you.
Justin, is your YouTube channel working?
I have no idea.
Yeah, it should be.
It is. Angel won't do it. She's having trouble getting.
It's probably not live yet, is it?
It just went live.
You just went live, so now, yeah, just tell it to refresh.
Also, we are live, then? I don't know, all you guys know, nose picking. Good evening.
Chuck.
Doing well.
Hi, Jack, how you doing? I'm doing all right.
And that's two, some money goes to y'all made over at Warhead.
Thank you.
It was good.
Thank you. We're hoping to have another one, but we hadn't picked a date yet.
In the fall or in the spring?
I hope to have one in February and maybe another one toward the last of March. A small one, we're going in March. Will probably be a eat in and any goodbye at the church too, so. The other way, we used to do it.
Okay, gotcha.
But I know we'll have one, at least one in February.
Okay. Okay. You used to have two in the fall, I was thinking.
We have, we usually have two in the fall.
About six seconds.
If we've only had one, and I'm trying to get them to go back to three. Two in the fall, one in the first year.
Schneider, how the world you doing?
It's been all right.
I heard a terrible rumor about you.
Cause I watched when they walked by and started counting.
That's what I said, everybody heard that rumor apparently. Almost like it's a fact.
Well, it's a well-known rumor.
A T H.
Tell me about that.
It's a substantiated.
So, when you start at Summerfield? Okay, gotcha.
This is gonna be my last Stokesdale meeting.
All right, well, it's been nice working with you.
We're starting to work with me, I'm sure, just on the other side.
Will, and I'll be, uh, still, actually, one thing I got in Summerfield.
Does it hurt?
Some kind of languishing from my lack of attention, mainly mostly, but.
I'm gonna stay out of the politics.
No, I think you need to, I need to, need to make a stand, though.
Whatever they tell me they want is what I'm gonna do.
What, has the guild done them attacking you or anything?
Does that mean there's one person watching us on YouTube?
I think they're under the radar for a while.
Yes, two up in the.
There's two up, well, it says one down there and it says two up there, so.
Oh, what's the one?
It says concurrent viewers, but then it also says concurrent viewer, now it says concurrent viewers too.
Oh, okay. Most interesting.
I need to get myself one of those.
And the five on the very right side, what's that saying?
I haven't spurred for the twenty twenty-three version.
I mean, I would imply because they just pass a whole bunch more legislation that's.
Long enough for the pledge of allegiance. But the one thing I really like about it is getting these annotations.
Case law.
It says how course of interpretation this.
Six fifty-eight.
Which you don't get online, at least I can find.
There are no annotations in the actual legislative code.
And so, so I'm, and these, the whole set's only worth about, only about nine hundred bucks, so it's about thirty volumes.
I just need that one. Actually, I'd like to have one fifty-three, too.
Yeah.
I think they're giving us all a hint.
Cause I've got some, I got the twenty nineteen version.
Sorry?
I think they're giving us a hint.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And there's one on every seat.
Thank you.
There's one on every seat.
Yeah, that's what I said, I think they're giving us a hint.
Okay, now, what does the one mean, then? Mason?
That says.
Number one, it's time.
I don't know what the difference is between views and concurrent viewers.
Oh. Well, somebody jumped off, because now it's only three minutes before it was five minutes.
Now it's averaging the two together, probably.
That's probably right.
One and a half people watching right now.
Seven o'clock, according to AT&T. Good evening, folks, I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First thing we'll do is review and adopt the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion, if you would.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda as it stands.
A second?
Second.
T seconds it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Approval of minutes, regular town planning board meeting of August twenty-second. Has anybody looked at it? And is there any changes?
I move we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Good. Adopt the town of Stokesdale Planning Board Meeting Schedule for two thousand twenty-five. Any issues with those, folks? I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule as proposed.
As written.
Gentry has a motion, anybody second?
Up here on the top, you've got the cutoff date for December the fourth. For twenty twenty-four, but it shows no planning board meeting.
That's for the, I think for the January meeting. If I'm reading that right. Mason, am I clear?
Yeah, that would be the cutoff date for the January twenty-third meeting.
So there won't be a planning board meeting in December?
No, there will be.
This is for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Just to clarify, there is one scheduled for December. There is one scheduled.
There is one scheduled.
But the schedule is for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I guess it depends on whether we have any new business next month.
Right, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Southern, is that, is that, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I got it.
All right. I think you, uh.
I made a motion, I don't know if we have a second yet.
Mr. Gentry made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Southern, seconds it, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. New business meeting, rezoning case two four dash zero nine dash P L B D dash zero 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 nine six. Justin, Town Planner, would you present this case for us?
Yes, thank you, uh, so this sits seventy-eight forty-eight U S Highway one fifty-eight. The request is to go from A G Agricultural and R S forty Single Family Residential to a conditional zoned R S thirty, which is single-family residential. Uh, the property is located on the north side of U S one fifty-eight, approximately thirty-four hundred feet east of the intersection of Highway one fifty-eight with U S sixty, or North Carolina sixty-eight North. It's Guilford County Tax Parcel one six four zero six six. And, uh, the planning board will make a recommendation to the Stokesdale Town Council, which will have the final authority to approve or deny the request. And additionally, the town of Stokesdale may place conditions on the request, provided they are agreed upon by the owners in writing. And, uh, should the town establish conditions that are not agreed to by the owners, then the town could either deny the rezoning, or the town would need to amend the conditions to be acceptable to the owners in writing. A- as of this time, the developer has proposed the following development condition, and that would be that the maximum number of lots would be eighty-five. Staff would note that that would only set a maximum number of lots, however, the minimum lot size, environmental conditions, easements, watershed regulations, topography, roads, and other factors could further reduce the actual number of lots that would be yielded from the development, if it's developed. And the developer has also proposed a use condition that all uses in the R S thirty zoning district allowed in the table permitted uses in the Stokesdale zoning ordinance would be allowed, except for junk motor vehicles permitted. Um, and so in your packets, you've got descriptions of each of the districts. Uh, I'll go over the R S thirty district, it's a single-family residential district primarily intended to accommodate moderate density, single-family detached dwellings in areas without access to public water and wastewater services. However, I will note that the Stokesdale Development Ordinance requires connection to the public water system as part of an R thirty, R S thirty zoning. So, your typical lot yield will typically be one point three units per acre or less. The general character of the area, existing parcels vacant. Surrounding uses to the north are agricultural and vacant. South is single-family residential and retail office uses separated from the parcel by one fifty-eight. To the east, it's vacant, but potentially soon to be developed as residential. Um, and then to the west, single-family residential and agricultural. There are no historic landmarks or cemeteries on or adjacent to the property. His Stokesdale Fire Protection District, uh, would be private septic systems and Stokesdale Water. Uh, existing transportation conditions, U S one fifty-eight is a major thoroughfare per the adopted twenty twenty-four Collective Street Thoroughfare Plan. Uh, there are no improvements proposed as part of this application, however, uh, the intent likely would be to develop as a residential subdivision. Uh, projected traffic generations unable to be determined at this time, since funding use has not been established. However, U S one fifty-eight carried seventy-six hundred average annual daily trips in twenty twenty-two. Uh, develop, development would be subject to N C D O T road improvements as applicable. Um, and those are including but not limited to turn lanes, X L D cell lanes, et cetera. Uh, school impacts not are anticipated at this time, however, should the property develop as a residential subdivision, there could be minor impacts to the public school system, and I believe you have an addendum to your packets with a school impact statement. Uh, topography is moderately and steeply sloping, there is one hundred-year flood plain on the property designated as Zone A E. Per the firm, the flood source is Troublesome Creek. There are also mapped wetlands on this property per the National Wetlands Inventory. This property is located in the Reedsville Watershed Three Water Supply Watershed General Watershed Area. Uh, there are map streams, as well as a pond on the property per the U S G S and Soil Survey Map of Guilford County, and the Jordan Lake Riparian Buffer Rules would apply to this property. And, uh, we have a note from our watershed department that the existing earthen fill dam for the pond has significant tree and woody vegetation growth based on aerial imagery. The trees and woody vegetation on the dam can cause stability of the dam to degrade over time and potentially fail if not addressed. Falling and uprooted trees can result in structural impacts to the earthen dam. Dead and decaying tree roots, trees and roots create void spaces in the earthen dam resulting in potential water seepage, erosion, structural impacts, and possibly dam failure. And so they have proposed additional development conditions as part of their review of this application, and, um, and so as part of the land use plan, the recommendation's residential, and so, uh, if adopted, this would not require an amendment to your future land use plan. Staff is recommending approval with the added development conditions from the watershed department as follows. An evaluation of the existing pond and associated dam conditions and stability must be conducted and described in a signed sealed report prepared by a professional engineer with recommendations for repair and maintenance included in the report. All necessary permits and approvals for repairs and maintenance must be obtained prior to preliminary plat- approval. The following will be required prior to recording of a subdivision plat. Pond and dam repairs must be complete, the area is stabilized, and an operation and maintenance plan for the pond and dam must be prepared for use by the Owners Association and recorded in the Owners Association Declaration, Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions. And if adopted by the, uh, Town Council, uh, these would be enforced during the subdivision review process by the Technical Review Committee. Um, and then in your staff report, you have the statement of reasonableness and consistency. Um, staff would ask that you adopt those statements as part of any motion that's made on this, uh, particular property. And that's all I got for you.
Okay. Anybody on the planning board with questions? Good for Justin.
Hey, Justin, I do have a question for you. The operation and maintenance plan for the pond and dam, what kind of requirements would, uh, would this plan have to meet?
I have no idea. They're watershed requirements, so when they, um, when they review the watershed development plan, uh, and all the stormwater, uh, things that go with it, then at that point, uh, the operation and maintenance agreement would have to support any of the, uh, proper protection measures that would be in place, um, to meet the stormwater regulations, so.
I imagine they would have to clear the dam of the trees and keep it clear of the trees.
I guess any potential dredging or cleaning of the pond and that kind of thing would be part of that, and that would be.
Thanks stabilization, a- all those things would fall under that, that agreement, and that's a long-term agreement, so it would be ongoing over the lifespan of, uh, the development.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, let's see. I guess if there's a public comment now. So anybody wants to talk about this? Either for or against?
Good evening, my name is Craig Fleming, mic on.
We don't have the mic hooked up.
Good evening, I'm Craig Fleming, I'm with F E I Engineers and Surveyors. I'm also a part of the development team. Uh, my address, new address, is forty-one ninety-six Mendonahal Hoeks Parkway in High Point, formerly of Colfax. Just moved our offices back, please, it's been quite a deal. I'll take a minute just to introduce you to the development team. I think these folks are local on the development, so, Holmes, and Casey Johnson, and Holly Johnson. So, the four of us are the development team, we're local to the area, we have quite a bit of experience with these types of projects. So, hopefully I'll give you a level of confidence that we can do this in a responsible manner. Thanks to Justin and the staff for, um, reviewing our plan. Prepared some sketch plan and went to the planning department with that. So, it helped them in their review of this process and preparing their report. Uh, we'll start out with the zoning requested, um, we're requesting an R S thirty zoning as opposed to an R S forty zoning. Primarily, the reason for that is not about density, it's more about the width of the lots. Uh, an R S forty requires a significantly wider lot than an R S thirty zoning. R S thirty requires a number of one hundred-foot wide lot. And it's a trend, I don't know if you guys have noticed, it's a trend really everywhere, and the lot sizes are getting narrower. Uh, home sizes are changing, and we're trying to adapt to that number more. Hundred-foot mass is, hundred-foot minimum, um, we do wanna keep our, we're trying to keep our lots wider than that, hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty feet. The intent is to make a nice upscale neighborhood. The, uh, the R S thirty zoning, I think Justin mentioned, allows for one point three units per acre as a density. It's a little thumb for an R S thirty zoning. What we're asking for is eighty-five lots on over a hundred acres, so that would be actually less than a hundred. Significantly less than what R S thirty allows. Again, hopefully that's evidence we're trying to do kind of an upscale, upscale neighborhood. Ultimately, the final determination on lot counts usually by the health department anyway, by septic, septic availability. So, of course, as part of the process, um, the health department will go out and will evaluate every single lot and will adjust accordingly to where the source is located. But in no event, in no case, we would plan on going above the eighty-five lot maximum. As Justin mentioned, you're just gonna determine the widening section. Once we apply for driveway permit and they see and evaluate our final plan, then they'll determine what kind of turn lanes we'll leave. And we're also taking care of the permitting process. Permitting in general requires that we comply with all sorts of regulations that follow. So, the zoning is the first step, zoning is to establish people's use. And then the technical details tend to follow in the permitting process. Which kind of brings us to the pond issue. Do you understand the concern with the pond, uh, on site? Uh, that, um, pond is in some state of disrepair. We haven't fully evaluated that, its condition. We do know that if the pond were to remain, there might be some, well, there will be some significant improvement that'll be made to the pond. For some reason, the watershed department feels compelled to bring that into the zoning discussion. Uh, what, what we would say is, um, should the pond remain, then we can understand all the regulations and all the requirements that are involved in keeping that pond and fixing it and making sure it complies with the dam safety act and all the other regulations that go along with that. Really, it's permitting, not really land use. Um, the other potential issue is, we might look at the pond and say, it's not worth fixing, so we just drain it. That's another reason to consider whether or not you really wanna put all those conditions on a zoning application for something that's really maybe more of an environmental permitting issue. So, enough about that. Yeah, that's really all I have, of course, no junk motor vehicles, certainly not after. Honestly, we're trying to hopefully do another upscale neighborhood that Stokesdale will be proud of.
Thank you.
Glad to answer any questions.
Having the pond there is a question to be answered, then. You might drain it. Well, it's considered a wetland, isn't it? So you'd have to be getting in with the engineers to drain it.
Absolutely, it is, it is regulated and it is jurisdictional. So there's a whole permitting process around keeping it, fixing it, and.
Draining it.
Around draining it. So, regardless of what happens to that pond, it's regulated and, and there will be permits to be applied for plans to be drawn and approved and all that. Another reason, I'm not sure it's really the zoning kind of issue, it's really a regulatory kind of issue.
I'll say I'm interested because I have a pond, too.
Some people say ponds are as much or more trouble than swimming pools.
They do add value to a property, to, lakefront property means a lot.
But I'd be glad to answer, any of us would be glad to answer any questions you all have.
Questions from the board?
In addition, if that pond stays there, is there gonna be any kind of protections around it for kids? Or some kind of restrictions to? But kids are gonna be kids, they find a water hole, they gonna play.
Absolutely. I'm not sure there's a, a good solution, there's not like a fence, keep everybody out kind of solution. What we've seen in other neighborhoods is sometimes there's common areas that's dedicated around the pond, sometimes there's private property owners that own to the pond. And each individual property owner is sort of responsible for their surety, so to speak. So, I don't know that I can really answer that as, as anything more than just an ownership limitation or some common area H O A kind of limitation on access.
Mr. Winfee, while I can use the town's resources, is there an issue with the pond because it's not a swimming pool as limiting access to kids? Is there a liability issue somewhere?
I'm assuming that the, um, the pond, if it's retained, would be in common areas and it would ultimately belong to the H O A.
That's our, that's our plan.
Um, and so it would be up for the H O A, uh, down the road, um, to ensure, have insurance policies to protect them, and I'm sure the insurance company's gonna require certain things to be done in order for them to write the policy to start with. I don't see any exposure for the town, if your question is about does the town have any exposure, I'm not seeing.
Just in any case?
Yeah, uh, but, um, um, but down the road, um, you get into issues of attractive nuisance, um, well, like with the pool or trampoline, or sometimes these things having to attract kids to them, and then there's injuries resulting. So, that's where the H O A would need to protect itself either through insurance policies or limiting access in some way.
Okay, thank you for your information. All right, anybody else would like to speak on this? For or against, well, I think we have a limited audience here. We don't have to be quite so formal. All right. No one else wanting to talk? Let's have a motion. As a recommendation to the Town Council.
Close to public hearing?
Yeah, okay, the public hearing is now closed. Planning Board, A. Well, consider a motion.
I mean, I'd like to go with the motion to approve based on staff recommendation. I'm just, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with how to word the motion in light of the fact that there's a possibility the pond could be dealt with through, you know, with proper approvals, that it could be dealt with through drainage versus conditions we've placed here.
So what you could do is you could say, should the pond remain, then you get to approve with the conditions as enumerated in the staff report.
Okay. Or.
Well, except if these have not been, um, offered by the applicant, in other words, you, you, um, the applicant has not offered those conditions, so I, I. so I, I, I don't think it would be appropriate to add it, since it's not been offered by the, uh, by the applicant. So I think.
I think i- if they were to agree to it in writing, however.
Right, and they have not done that, I'm not aware that's, that's happened at this point.
And they wouldn't do that until it's offered formally by the, by the Town Council, right?
That's right, so I guess.
This is just a recommending body, this is not a decision-making body.
So you, so one possibility is you could say, um, we recommend it to Town Council, uh, and we also recommend to Town Council that they consider the staff recommendations with regard to the pond and dam.
Should it.
Right, because ours is just the recommendation, anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right. So to, to make this official, I guess I would say, I would like to propose a motion that we approve, uh,
Recommend.
That we recommend the rezoning as, uh, as indicated here, uh, based on staff recommendations. You know, I guess provide with the provision that, um, the, uh, the pond remain, that it be, that it be, uh, met, that it meet these conditions, or if the pond not remained, that, um, be, I don't know, what was?
Well, or, or, you just say, recommend that the Town Council consider the staff's recommendations with regard to the pond and the dam.
All right. Recommend that the Town Council cons- consider.
The staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations.
As it relates to the pond and the dam.
As it relates to the pond and dam. Um, in keeping with the fact that this, uh, meets with the reasonableness and consistency, in terms of our rezoning and our future land use plan.
Good job. A second? I'll second. Mr. Southern, second, let's take a vote. Mr. Southern? Aye. Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And also, aye. Agree, aye. Motion passes. All right. Next piece of agenda is. All right.
Okay, we got a couple of announcements, I guess.
If I can get it open. All right, announcements. Next regular Stokesdale Town Council meeting will be held on Thursday, December twelfth, at seven PM, and as we are sitting. The next regular Stokesdale Town Planning Board meeting will be held on Thursday, December nineteenth, at seven PM. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I briefly add another announcement to that, Mr. Chairman? Um, um, this is apparently Mr. Snyder's last meeting. Uh, Planning Board meeting is being our planning, um, representative from the, from the county. Uh, he has taken, I understand he's taken a position with the town of Summerfield as their planner. He starts in two weeks there, so I wanted to at least announce and express my appreciation of Mr. Snyder for his hard work on behalf of the town, uh, in the period I've been here. He's been a great asset for the town, so. We don't know who, who's your replacement, you know who your replacement's gonna be here?
It'll likely be a combination of staff, like probably Oliver and Avery with our department, because that's all that's left right now, until, until they replace it.
Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
I'd like to place a motion that we appreciate your help. Justin and Alaska, second. For only motion.
I'll second that, for sure.
All right, we all agree, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much, Justin, appreciate you.
In your new endeavor.
I won't be far away.
And his job's a simpler now with a thousand acres missing.
That's right.
That's right.
Now, Chair will entertain the motion to adjourn. I make the motion, we adjourn. Mr. Southern makes a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Se- Mr. Stevens? Stevens, seconds it, all those in favor?
Aye.
And well, and doesn't want to, can stay.